Daniel Hirsch is a lecturer in nuclear policy at University of California, Santa Cruz. He is the former director of the Stevenson Program on Nuclear Policy at UCSC. He is also president of the Committee to Bridge the Gap, a 40-year-old nonprofit organization working to reduce risks of nuclear accident, nuclear proliferation, nuclear terrorism, and problems of radioactive waste disposal. Shortly after the Fukushima accident began, Hirsch was asked to testify before the Select Committee on Earthquake and Disaster Preparedness, Response, and Recovery of the California Senate on the implications of the disaster for the Diablo Canyon and San Onofre reactors. Thank you, Mr. Hirsch, for joining us this evening. And he asked to speak from this vantage point so that everyone could see him, which we appreciate greatly.
Life is a series of choices. I didn't want to have my back either to the distinguished counsel or to the distinguished constituents that the counsel represents. I'm going to try to quickly describe for you what occurred at Fukushima, answer the question many of you have, whether it can happen here, if it could happen here, what might be the consequences, and then finally, what are the implications in terms of what one ought to do. So a couple bits of explanation first. Nuclear reactor is absolutely extraordinary device. It has concentrated inside it an amazing amount of energy, and that is coupled with an amazing amount of radioactivity. The two San Onofre reactors that are still operating, a few miles from where we are speaking tonight, contain in them, while the reactors are functioning, about 15 billion curies of radioactivity. A curie itself produces 37 billion radioactive disintegrations per second. So we're talking about hundreds of billions of billions of radioactive disintegrations every second inside that core. Any one of those disintegrations that was occurring outside the core and happened to be inside your body could end up producing a cancer or genetic effect or leukemia. We measure permissible concentrations of radioactivity in the environment in picocuries. Those are millions of a millionth of a curie. So understand, we have 15 billion curies inside a reactor, and we measure permissible concentrations in millions of a millionth of a curie. These are incredibly toxic materials, and there's no huge risk to us so long as they stay inside the reactor. The problem is that they can get out. When that material decays, it gives off alpha, beta, gamma radiation, as you heard earlier. It also gives off thermal radiation, heat. That heat is what boils the water, that produces the steam, that produces electricity that powers our lights. They're using the reactor to tame the power of an atom bomb, to basically boil water. Inside the two San Onofre units, while they're operating, they contain about 1,000 times the long-lived radioactivity of the Hiroshima bomb, each of the reactors. And the spent fuel pools, the pools in which the irradiated fuel is then put, cooled in these pools, contain five or 10 times as much as that. So you have something on the order of 20 Chernobyls' worth of long-lived radioactivity sitting a few miles from here. Again, no huge risk if it is contained, but it is very hot, and the only way it avoids getting out into the environment is if it's constantly cooled. While the radioactivity is inside the fuel, it stays inside the fuel largely, some leaks out. But if the fuel isn't cooled, the fuel melts, and when it melts, some of the radioactivity that is volatile at these high temperatures, goes off as a gas, like iodine, concentrates in the thyroid gland, produces thyroid cancer, strontium-90, which concentrates in bone, causing bone cancer, leukemia, cesium-137, which gives you an entire, whole body dose. These materials and others come off in copious quantities when the fuel melts. So the basic lesson of nuclear reactors is you have to make sure that the fuel never loses its cooling, that fuel therefore never melts. Even irradiated fuel in those pools, if the pool loses its cooling, under certain circumstances, that fuel can melt or even catch fire. The cladding around the spent fuel is made of zirconium, and zirconium, when it gets hot in the presence of air, burns, and that's about the worst thing possible, a nuclear fire, because it provides a driving force to drive off not just the volatiles but the particulates to the environment. Now, the figures that you saw are about the maximum kinds of consequences, worst-case consequences, of a severe accident, and give you an idea of how much radioactivity is there and what might happen if it got out. The NRC's estimates, again in 1982, were 130,000 prompt fatalities. This is worst case, and I just wanted to explain why that would occur. If there weren't effective evacuation, if there were a rapid release, and those casualties would occur within a few miles of the reactor, that's Hiroshima-Nagasaki-type illnesses. In the case of Chernobyl, that happened only for a few hundred people, the workers, because it was a fire that forced the radioactivity high into the atmosphere, and so it bypassed nearby areas in terms of those huge doses. But it was an awful accident because it produced a huge amount that could produce latent casualties. So when we hear about maybe 50 or a few hundred casualties from Chernobyl, those were the acute, the immediate deaths from Hiroshima. The estimates of tens of thousands or perhaps more are the estimates of the latent cancers. These are two different kinds of radiation injury. If you get a huge dose, you can die within a few days. If you get a smaller dose, you can get cancer or leukemia later. The estimate from the NRC at that time was about 300,000 cancers could be produced in the outlined community. That could be quite what further than the few miles around the site, because there is no threshold for radiation damage. Every bit of radiation causes an increased risk of cancer, so if you produce, release a large amount of radiation but it's spread out over a lot of people, it can still produce lung cancers. And then they estimated about 600,000 genetic effects. Those numbers would be different today. Again, those are from 30 years ago. The population has increased. The current risk figures for cancer reduction from the National Academy of Sciences has increased by three to fourfold. We probably would have a lower estimate today for genetic effects, and the acute casualties is very much a determination of whether the evacuation system works, whether we, if that accident occurred, is it about three miles from where we are?
Yeah, about four.
Okay, a few miles from here. Six.
Sixteen.
Okay. If that occurred, and they didn't get the warning to you in time to get out, and it was a prompt release, you could have significant numbers of acute casualties. With luck, you would have a strange number of those, but still a very large number of cancers eventually, as well as losing a substantial portion of land that couldn't be used for generations. You know that they're now having to create essentially a dead man's zone around Fukushima that had to do that for Chernobyl. It's all a question of probabilities, though, which way the wind is blowing, how quickly the release occurs. In the case of Fukushima, there were very, there weren't acute fatalities in large measure because, again, they evacuated relatively well, although not very far, so they still have a lot of cancers that could be produced. And the accident occurred in a boiling water reactor where most of the releases went through these water pools and scavenched some of the radioactivity. Unfortunately, that wouldn't happen for San Onofre, which is a pressurized water reactor. It has a better containment, would not be able to scavenge quite as well. So we're talking about an immense amount of radioactivity, thousands of times the long-lived radioactivity of the Hiroshima bomb. We're talking about some multiple of the Chernobyl release existing at San Onofre. And the question is, what's the likelihood anything can happen? Well, in the case of Fukushima, everyone thought the likelihood was zero until the hour of the event. They built the reactor to withstand an earthquake that turned out to be far smaller than the earthquake that actually occurred. They built it to withstand a tsunami that turned out to be far smaller than the tsunami that occurred. And that's partially because there are always surprises. Science, particularly seismology, is not a precise art. Every few years, there is a new fault discovered. There is a new discovery about the capability of an old fault. Faults that we didn't think were connected turn out to be connected. We're not very good at predicting. In fact, the ability to predict an earthquake, to say, "When is it going to occur?", but a lowest magnitude, is pure guesswork at present, and we do not have high confidence. So what is the probability that there will be an earthquake near San Onofre, and it will be of larger magnitude than the plant was designed for? We don't know. I should tell you that California Coastal Commission, a decade ago, concluded that the earthquake faults nearby were capable of about six times the ground motion, the acceleration at the epicenter, as the reactor had been designed for. The fault was much larger in terms of its capability than they had thought when they built the reactor. We all know the same thing happened at Diablo Canyon. PG&E built a reactor, claimed there was no offshore fault, wouldn't let there be testimony about a possibility of a fall, built the reactor. A few years later, they discovered the Hoskry Fault, which was far more capable than the reactor was designed for, and to try to replicate it. The late-grade conservationist David Brower once defined a nuclear power plant as the complex technological device for locating earthquake faults in California. You build one and you'll find an earthquake fault afterwards. Well, what does that mean? The risk of something happening like what occurred at Fukushima here in San Onofre is not quantifiable. We cannot tell you. There's been a science called probabilistic risk assessment, PRA, which tries to quantify. And decades ago, the estimate was that there's about a 1 in 10,000 risk per year per reactor of severe core damage. Well, that sounds like a really good set of odds, 1 in 10,000. But remember that there are 104 reactors, and they're operating for 50 or 60 years. And when you take all that into account, Commissioner, NRC Commissioner James Alsos was talking, showing that there's like a 40% probability, even from the industry's old numbers, of a severe accident. What's the chance it's going to be at San Onofre rather than at Davis-Besse or Indian Point? It's just pure tossing of dice. We don't know. How do you quantify the probability that a nuclear plant worker is going to not do the hourly fire watches that he's required to do, and instead will fabricate the logs? You can't quantify it. You think it's impossible to happen. How do you quantify that they might do it for five years? Impossible. It'd be incredible. But that happened at San Onofre. For five years, hourly fire watches weren't happening, and the employees were fabricating the log rather than actually going out and doing the watch. Understand what the importance was of the fire watch. You have to have your electrical control systems function. You have to control the reactor to shut it down to keep the cooling systems operating. And many reactors did not have adequate insulation for their electrical wires. There was a famous fire at a reactor called Brown's Ferry years ago, and they always tell us, "The backup system's on backup system." So they had one system of cables, an entirely redundant system of cables. But the geniuses ran both the primary and the backup system of cables through the same cable splitting room. And an electrician went in, did some work, and then lit a candle, which was the standard practice at the time, to see if the room was at negative pressure. The candle ignited the insulation of the wiring, because the geniuses had built the insulation for a nuclear reactor out of material that burns. And it caught fire, and of course, the primary wire's caught and the backup wire's caught. And they lost control of the reactor and nearly had a meltdown. So the NRC ordered all reactors to fix this problem, and reactor after reactor said, "Oh, it'll take us longer than we thought, and a little longer than we thought. You give us an extension, and instead we'll put in place compensatory measures." Nice phrase. Which means we'll send a guy out as a watchman every hour to see if something's burning. But for five years at San Onofre, those hourly watches on that ship weren't happening, and the log was being fabricated. Now, I'm jumping ahead, but let me tell you, I was long a supporter of nuclear power, and I have had my views changed, not so much because of the technology. I think that maybe some other species could run nuclear power plants appropriately. I'm not sure that we have the institutions to be able to do that. And let me give you an example of why I'm frightened and why my views have changed. What do you think the Nuclear Regulatory Commission did to Southern California Edison when they discovered that there'd been five years of hourly fire watches that didn't happen and the logs haven't fabricated? What do you think was the action? They went into an alternative dispute resolution process, and the result was that PG, excuse me, Edison was required to put in place a sensitivity training program for workers on the importance of complying with regulations. This is not an unusual action on the part of NRC and Edison. We'll talk in a moment about the other problems with the safety culture that's existed, but let's come back to Fukushima for a moment. What happened at Fukushima? I told you that fuel has to be constantly cooled, or it will melt, or in the case of spent fuel, burn. You can't lose the cooling. How do you cool fuel? With water, run by pumps? How do pumps pump water? They need electricity. We've all seen the power lines coming out of San Onofre. Most of us think of those power lines as the lines in which electricity leaves the reactor and comes to us, the power lines. That's in part what they do. But they have a very important other function. They have to bring electricity into the reactor to be able to run the pumps to keep the reactor cool. And one of the things most of us don't understand is that when a reactor is running, it's producing lots of heat, but you can't turn it all off. When you scram a reactor, when you try to shut down the fissioning, about 7% of the heat that's being generated when it's at full power is still being generated. You can't turn the key off entirely. So you have to keep cooling it long after the reactor stopped fissioning. That means you need electricity coming in to run the pumps, and you need the cooling water to keep coming in from the ocean, and you need all those other systems to work. So you need the power to come in from those lines, and if you lose that, you're in trouble. And the earthquake brought down the power lines at Fukushima. Not to worry, we've got backup systems, diesel generators. But at Fukushima, the diesel generators failed. This is an accident sequence that we in this field refer to as station blackout. The nuclear station loses power, it blackouts, because it's lost the offsite power and it's lost the backup diesel generators. Can that happen at San Onofre? It probably won't happen in exactly the same way it did at Fukushima. You know the old saying, "That history doesn't repeat itself, it rhymes." It won't be exactly the same accident. It won't be a 9.1 earthquake followed by a certain type tsunami, but there are lots of other ways you can lose offsite power and lose your backup diesels. And let me give you a couple of examples that make me nervous about San Onofre. It's had a lot of problems with its backup diesel generators. Late '90s, there were problems about batteries not working appropriately. The NRC got very upset. And then, a few years ago, it was discovered that San Onofre had not connected the batteries appropriately to the diesel generators, and they had not been corrected properly for four years. Four years! Eventually, that was discovered, and that got fixed. How can you operate for four years without kind of a problem not be caught? Says something about the safety culture. Says something about NRC, which didn't do anything serious when that was then found. A year or two later, they had some minor emergency and tried to turn on one of the backup diesels. It wouldn't start, and the problem was the backup to the backup was down for repairs, so they had no diesel to operate. They had to shut the reactor down. If they hadn't been able to, or if they couldn't get the diesels back up again, we may have had a trouble. So they've had a history of trouble with backup diesel generators. Even under the best of circumstances, if they work, they don't work for very long. They often overheat, they often don't have enough diesel fuel on hand to be able to withstand a long period in which the offsite power is down. Generally, have two, three days or something of diesel fuel, and no real mechanism for what happens when they overheat. In the Fukushima situation, the offsite power was down for day, many, many days into many, into several weeks. Like the Fukushima reactors, US reactors have a third backup, which is some batteries. In the Fukushima case, those batteries were only required to last eight hours, and when they ran out, the reactor started to melt. The US, you only have to have them run for four hours. So can station blackout happen a few miles from here? Yes. It can happen by earthquake, these large falls nearby. It can happen by fires, which you had, that can bring down those offsite power lines. It can happen by terrorism. I don't want to get into too much detail about this, but this is something I've spent much of my career looking at. Do you know how many external terrorists, people attacking from outside the plant, San Onofre and all of the plants in this country are required by regulation to be able to protect against?
Two.
Five now. Used to be three. And I had done a petition for rulemaking to the NRC after the 9/11 event, where of course, there were 19 terrorists, and they came in by gear, asking NRC to simply increase the desired basis threat to at least 19, and also protect against the air attack. And that was turned down. They ended up choosing five because they claimed that 9/11 was not four, excuse me, was not one terrorist event, but four, and there were no more than five terrorists per plane. So understand, to reduce the cost to the utility, to have a security system that's more affordable, they only have to protect against five. Until they increased it to five, they only had to protect against three. And there was a program called the Operational Safeguards Response Evaluation Program, OSRI, which would test reactor security by black hat test, people pretending to be terrorists. Only three terrorists, on foot, acting as a single team, and the mock terrorists would tell the operators of the reactor, like San Onofre, six months to a year in advance of the day that they're coming. Do you know what the failure rate was under those circumstances? Nearly half the reactors in the country failed these tests. In nearly half the cases, the mock terrorists could get in and destroy the primary safety system and the backup system and produce a meltdown, had they been real terrorists. And that's when we had just the three, and when, again, a year or six months in advance notice. To this day, you do not have to protect against a plane coming in like we saw on 9/11. And the 9/11 Commission concluded that the Al Qaeda terrorists had planned initially to hit a nuclear reactor, decided at the last minute to put that off until some subsequent attack. So what can happen accidentally, the loss of your primary and your secondary system can happen intentionally. And we live in a very dangerous world. You can't do much damage if you tack windmills or solar collectors, but you can do an awful lot of damage if you hit a nuclear plant. So we can have station blackout, a whole series of other accident sequences that one can have, and one can then lose the cooling. And then you can have a large release. Now, remember, there are eight and a half million people within 50 miles of San Onofre. The Nuclear Regulatory Commission criticized the Japanese for only evacuating 12 miles. By the way, that criticism looks right now, because we're finding some real hot areas, quite some distance beyond 12 miles. The NRC recommended Americans in Japan evacuate out 50 miles. But in the United States, and right here, your evacuation zone is only 10 miles. I sat through the licensing hearings for San Onofre 30 years ago, when the evacuation plan was being presented. Under the law, you can't approve a license unless it's a workable evacuation plan. The NRC, however, has viewed its job as granting licenses, as one of the NRC commissioners says, "We're in the business of granting licenses." No, the business should be on deciding whether to grant a license or not. There's great pressure on them to grant them, so they approved San Onofre, even though the evidence was crystal clear through the testimony that there was no workable evacuation plan. All of you know how difficult it is to travel on these freeways under the best of circumstances during Russia. Imagine what it's like to evacuate in the midst of a nuclear reactor accident, when everyone is panicking, everyone is driving in one direction to their kid's school to try to pick their kid up, or to a hospital to try to get testing iodide tablets or whatever, where there's, the model that was used essentially predicted that every square inch of highway would be covered with every square inch of car, and they'd all be able to travel at 45 miles an hour without any issue of cars overheating or accidents or any of that. It just isn't real. It'd be extraordinarily difficult to evacuate. And so the issue is, any nuclear power plant can have an accident. What we've learned from Fukushima is we are not immune. People argued that Three Mile Island was just a fluke, and we caught it half hour before full melt. Chernobyl wasn't relevant because it was a Soviet-designed reactor. But these were GE-designed reactors in Japan, in a technologically advanced society with a regulatory structure very similar to ours, with the same problem of cozy relations with the industries to regulate. And what can happen, which Japan can happen here, won't happen the same way. And no one can tell you which reactor it will happen to. It is quite possible that the two existing units at San Onofre could keep operating through their entire life without there being a serious act. Quite possible. It's possible that there could be an accident an hour from now. It's possible there can be an earthquake tomorrow, larger than the reactor was designed to withstand. There's simply no way of knowing. So anyone who tells you it's the worst thing on earth and you are all going to die tomorrow doesn't know what she or he is saying, but anyone who says that it can't happen tomorrow and cause a large radiation release also doesn't know what she or he is saying. It's a pure function of Russian roulette. I mean, I can put one bullet into one chamber of a gun, spin it, pull the trigger, got a pretty good chance that that first time, I'm not going to blow my head out. But I also could. Spinning a second time, it's not very wise, and the third is really foolish. And in essence, that is what dealing with nuclear power is. Now, there are a whole series of other problems. Each of the two units that San Onofre produces, every year, enough plutonium for 100 nuclear weapons. So 200 nuclear bombs' worth of plutonium produced each year from those two reactors. Plutonium has a half-life of 24,000 years. It's not going away quickly. It's also incredibly toxic material. One millionth of an ounce will cause lung cancer, if it's hailed with a statistical 100% certainty, near 100%. Incredibly toxic. So think about it, you can make bombs out of it, it's exquisitely toxic, probably the most toxic material on Earth. There might be a couple viruses that on a gram basis are more toxic, but essentially the most toxic material. And it lasts for half a million years, 20 half-lives. And so the waste we produce has to be kept from the human environment for 500,000 years. We've been a species for about 100,000 years. We have had recorded history for about 10,000 years. We've had a country for 200 or 300 years. How can you maintain waste that long? I've often said that these reactors produce 50 years of electricity and half a million years of waste. It's not a particularly good deal to the people who have to deal with it. We're getting the power, they're getting the cancers, generation after generation, and we simply don't have a way of disposing of it safely. We don't know how to keep it in one place in the environment without it migrating into groundwater, including water supply. We don't know how to do that. The first nuclear waste was produced, high-level waste, on December 2nd, 1942, and we still don't know how to dispose of that waste. So the problems with nuclear power are plentiful. There's the potential for a major accident or a terrorist event, there's the proliferation of nuclear weapons, there's the high-level, long-lived radioactive waste produced. It also steals a lot of resources, but I believe are the true solutions. At the end of the day, everything's a trade-off. Anyone who pretends that nuclear is the worst thing on Earth and that everything else is fine is missing the reality that coal is killing lots of people and heating up the world, and that our addiction to oil has led to a huge number of wars and deaths, and also warming up the world. And that fossil fuels and uranium are unsustainable. We are going to either melt the planet from global warming, or we're going to blow it up with nuclear weapons. There shouldn't have been two choices, and they aren't. This reactor was designed to operate for about 40 years, and now they want to extend its license, another 20. I don't know about you, but I'm not sure I want to get into... I don't know about you, but I'm not sure I want to get into a plane that was built in the late 1940s to fly across the Pacific. These reactors, when they age, become much more dangerous. Neutrons embrittle the reactor vessels. So that over time, if you have to flood the reactor vessel with cold water, it can shatter like non-porous glass and the reactor loses its coolant and melts. There are a large number of other components that you can't replace with these reactors. So the idea of extending the life of these two San Onofre reactors is pushing them further and further into that part of their life cycle when the accident risk becomes greater and greater. So they were designed to shut down in a dozen years or so anyway. My own view, which has evolved over time, is that we need a sensible, thoughtful phase-out and replacement with safe renewable energy. And California is rich in that. There is a nuclear reactor which is safe enough to provide all of our power. It simply needs to have a large enough exclusion zone. Not the mile or two miles or two miles you'd have from San Onofre, but about 93 million. 93 million miles is about the right. And California is the Saudi Arabia of sub. If it falls on us as a blessing, we're wasting it, we're just letting it go. So if I were to make a recommendation to all of us now, is to learn the lessons of Fukushima. We all live in Fukushima. And you who live near San Onofre, live close to virtually anyone else. If you were to make a judgment about risk, it would be three factors that you would look at from a nuclear reactor. One would be the safety culture. Do they really have respect for the danger of that device? And really take care to make sure that nothing bad happens? I can't, you cannot say that about Southern California Edison and San Onofre. Five years of fabricated fire logs, four years of batteries not appropriately connected to the diesel generators. Over and over again, there have been findings by the NRC of a seriously defective safety culture. They're concerned that many of the violations have been willful, willful violations. There is a serious safety culture problem at that reactor nearby. Item one. Item two, it is near a massive earthquake fault that appears to be more capable than the reactor was initially designed for. And item three, it's in the first or second largest, most populated area for a reactor in the country. Indian Point outside New York City and San Onofre, these are the two leaders in the ability to affect large numbers of people. You add those three factors together, a broken safety culture, a massive earthquake fault, and immense population. And it's simply, if you're going to have to deal with a reactor to reduce risk, this has got to be at the top of your list. So I want to take your questions, have some discussion. But the bottom line is what happened in Fukushima can happen here. There's nothing in the physics of a reactor or the design of the San Onofre reactors that would prevent a large release of sort of occurred at Fukushima. And the release could be much larger and with much larger consequences than occurred at Fukushima. There were some unique aspects of that accident that would likely not occur here. So it can happen here. The chances are high enough that they are not negligible. It really is a gamble. And each of you can make a judgment. Maybe that gamble's worth it. But that gamble is unknowable in terms of what the actual percentage risk is. But it's high enough that if something happened tomorrow, most of us wouldn't be surprised. And lastly, the consequences could be immense. You could lose, there was a famous Atomic Energy Commission study of consequences of nuclear accidents that had this awful phrase in it, it became awful a few years later, which said that you could contaminate an area the size of Pennsylvania for generations. And then, of course, Three Mile Island occurred in Pennsylvania. Fortunately, it didn't contaminate huge areas until that high because they caught it half hour before full melt. But it still released significant materials. You, the materials that can be released in a meltdown, I told you about Caesar's Stronia? They have half-lives of about 30 years, which means they're dangerous for about 600 years. They're very biologically active. They tend to concentrate in the soil and the grass that the cow eats, cow milk, and child, and you. So if it gets into the environment, it can make a significant area unusable for generations. Or you're faced with the choice that the Japanese are, having to use it anyway and accepting the increased risk to yourselves and your children. So I would just suggest, on a policy basis, after years and years of reviewing this, one last factor, if there were a regulator that was shutting down, the worst of the reactors when they behaved badly, that didn't let the industry vet and choose, the commissioners who are to regulate them, that really issued big fines, it's just so much cheaper for a nuclear power plant to violate the rules and either pay no fine or pay a trivial fine than it is to comply. So with a regulator that's not functioning, and I think that's a general view of the NRC, that it is a captured regulatory agency captured by the industries to regulate. With those factors together, my own view is that the risks are too high. And that what Japan is doing, Germany is doing, Italy's doing, Switzerland is doing, which is a careful phase-out and replacement with renewables makes sense. Don't re-license this facility. Don't let it run beyond its design life. In fact, phase it out before the end of that design life. Do it carefully, do it thoughtfully. Replace it with renewables. This area, it could have huge industry producing those, that safe energy. And look, if you don't do it, you could run the reactor and nothing happened. It would still produce high-level waste and plutonium and all that, but there may not be an accident. But boy, if you were an elected official and something happened tomorrow and you had had a chance to do something, you would just be horrified to yourself that you didn't take the risk.